Meeting of the Town Council, uh, called to order at 6:34. Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Rick Will Shelvin of the Trinity Memorial Lutheran Church, remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pastor Scott here. In the coastal South Lake.
Okay. Pastor Scott, please come up for the invocation. Thank you.
Dear Lord, as we come before you right now at this Town Council meeting, I thank you for our town of Maryville, I thank you for all of our residents. I pray, Lord, bless this town, Lord. Bless every council person here tonight, Lord. Give them wisdom and make right decisions, Lord. Keep our town safe, keep our schools safe, keep our senior citizens safe. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
Mr. Guernsey, roll call, please.
Here.
Hardaway?
Here.
Garage?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Evening, Jean.
Whitey?
Meado?
Here. Six present. Petitions, communications, and remonstration. Our first one will be the childhood cancer awareness. Whereas childhood cancer is the number-one disease killer and the second overall leading cause of death of children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer annually, and whereas the types of cancer that affect children are most often very different from those that affect adults, and whereas the causes of most pediatric cancers are largely unknown and not strongly linked to lifestyle, unlike adult cancers, and whereas two-thirds of childhood cancer patients will develop long-lasting chronic conditions resulting from treatment, and whereas despite major advances in treatment, it is still critically important to conduct and increase the awareness regarding pediatric cancer, and whereas to reaffirm our admiration and support for the courageous youngsters and parents who struggle with this disease. Whereas this month, we recognize the dedication and hard work of all those scientists, healthcare professionals, and volunteers who are working to overcome childhood cancer. Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council does hereby proclaim the month of September 2014 Child Cancer Awareness Month in the town of Maryville.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. At this time, I would like to present to our representative, could you please step up? And we do thank you for everything that you and your organization does. And we would like to give this to you. Yes, we did, our own thing.
Actually, the proclamation that was sent did not get revised this year because Governor Pence signed into law on February 20th. So we wanted to stay consistent with what he did, but since then, more alarming statistics. And I just wanted to share briefly with you, just to put some faces with some of these statistics. These are all local children. These three boards carry only 38 pictures of the nearly 60 families we've connected with in five years. Thirty-eight children, 13 of these children are no longer with us, and we have four that are currently turned off. And so that puts us above the national average of deaths for cancer with kids. Does that mean we live in a bad place? Absolutely not. There are a lot of communities that are above the national average of deaths for children with cancer. But we do need to do more, and doing more doesn't mean having our funding cut 30% over the last five years, and that's unfortunately what has happened to our kids. So a month ago, you did receive information asking to support our local heroes for Little Girls Walk. So I'm going to follow up by phone in the next couple of days to see. I know it's only 12 days away, but we did send the information out a month ago, so we're hoping we have a few towns on board sponsoring our walk. It is really truly about awareness and supporting these parents because it's a devastating journey for them.
Yes, it is.
So I will leave another one with you with my information.
Very good.
And again, we have a lot of police department and fire chiefs going to be on board walking for our kids. Lake County Sheriff's Department is in us as well. So, um, there you go. We hope to see some Maryville shirts. And we also are proud to say that we are going to be traveling with four families to Washington DC on September 21st to represent North East Indiana for a light night at the White House and a march on the National Mall on September 21st. So we're making a little bit of noise, but we need your help to do better for these kids because it's out of control. Thank you so much for your time. I would just ask that whatever issue you have for you.
What's that poster for?
Uh, posters, I just wanted you to meet some of our kids.
I mean, if you want to leave one, I'd hang one in my office any time.
Well, these kind of go with me.
Alright, that's fine, that's fine.
But thank you, yeah, they're getting a little bit ragged, but, um, you know, non-profit, you know, it's kind of a lot of money on these things. So, but yeah, just some faces, some street little faces that have really endured a lot. So whatever issues you have before you tonight, please put it in perspective. Go home with your children, your grandchildren, because you never know when you're going to hear those words, your childhood. So, so thank you for your time and your lovely reading.
Thank you.
Can you just leave that with Bruce so he can put that in frame for you?
Um, I could, sure. Absolutely.
Would you, would you, Bruce is the guy, you're more than happy to put that in frame. That's the boss.
If you'd like to be back there, if you'd like to be in the hall when it's ready.
Sure.
Okay, let me give you my card, and please, if you want, for your patience. And what a lovely way to wrap up. Tonight was proclamation 18 for me, so, since August 4th. So thank you so much. We did get 100% from Lake County again this year, and Porter County as well. We don't have every city and town in there, I just don't have the manpower to get that done. But thank you again for getting this done for us, and hopefully you can help us make it count. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second proclamation for this evening, Patriot National Month of Remembrance. Whereas 13 years ago, the United States of America suffered an unprecedented national tragedy. On September 11th, 2001, many individuals from across our nation lost their lives in act of terrorism aimed at the heart of our country. And whereas the Americans we lost came from every color, faith, and ethnicity. They were cherished family members, friends, and fellow citizens, and we will never forget them. And whereas against the horrific backdrop of these events, the American people revealed the innate resilience and compassion that marks our nation. When the call came for volunteers to assist our heroic first responders, countless men and women answered with massive rescue and recovery event, offering hope and inspiration amidst tremendous heartbreak. And whereas throughout America, patriotism was renewed through common purpose and dedicated service in the day and weeks following September 11th. Many joined our armed forces to protect our country at home and abroad. Others chose to serve in their own neighborhoods and to those in need. And whereas through selfless acts for our country and one another, patriots in every corner of our nation continue to honor the memory of those lost on September 11th, 2001. Now therefore, the Maryville Town Council does hereby proclaim not only the day of September 11th, but for the month of September 2014 as Patriot and National Month of Remembrance. We urge all residents and business owners, owners, to proudly display the American flag in remembrance of those who gave their lives and those who continue to sacrifice to keep America free.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Span. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Consent agenda, council payable registered voucher approval for August 26, 2014, and the approval of Town Council meeting minutes of August 12, 2014.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Consent agenda, council payable registered voucher approval for August 26, 2014, and the approval of Town Council meeting minutes of August 12, 2014.
So moved.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Baron. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to standing committees, budget and finance, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Pettit.
Madam President, Bruce has handed me a memo that we have two openings in the Public Works. Public Works Department needs to hire two part-time employees per the salary earnings that no more than 30 hours per week. This would give the town a chance to evaluate them for consideration of full-time employment beginning in 2015. Any additional position is included in the 2015 budget as per Section 6.3 of the Town's Personnel Policy Handbook. This letter is to serve as the one-week notice to the Town Council of these openings. After this time, the Personnel Chairman and I will interview any councilperson's recommendation for possible employment before continuing the town's employment process. Please feel free to contact me with any questions. So this is our official notice, we have two part-time openings in Public Works, ladies and gentlemen. Any questions on that for Bruce? No?
Anything else on the Public Works?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairman. I've gotten a couple of calls from outside the town of Maryville, and I know that our clerk treasurer resides at 8500 Clay Street, but I've had three or four phone calls applauding us for the work that was done on Clay. Bruce, to you and Kevin, and to the guys at Walsh &amp; Kelly. I can't tell you how fabulous that road is. Jean, can you attest to that?
I asked Joe today to start running radar there, because these people just love that road.
I know they do. I know they do. It's long overdue, and I want to thank you guys for supporting me on that. That was a big investment that we made in that corridor, and I don't know if we still have the tab as the worst street in Lake County any longer, so.
Yeah, I can't use.
Although Rich might. 53rd Avenue.
I got one that's a lot worse.
Rich has, Rich has, I'm telling you, I drove that street, Rich, I go, oh my God. I would have turned around, but I was midway through, I didn't know which way to go.
Kind of like a portal no return.
I never seen anything that bad in my life.
And Bruce, did you find out anything about the coal patch?
Our department's the one that did the coal patch.
I rode through there and I saw a coal patch, and I'm thinking, if they put coal patch here, that's going to be it for us this year. So can you contact them again and just kind of like keep nudging?
I will.
Please, thank you.
You know, also on 53rd, I had a gentleman off of Infirine Street in my ward complaining about his, and I asked him if he'd like to take a little spin around town, and I did take him down 53rd. I had to stop because I thought I was going to lose my tires and my transmission and everything else underneath that tire underneath that car.
It's, you know, I still have the picture when I saw the little old lady out there with the shovel shoveling dirt into potholes. And she was like 86-years-old. And worst hot day, and she was sweating, and mosquitoes were eating her up, and she's got a shovel. And I'm watching this lady, and I said, what are you doing? She said, nobody else is doing it, I am. It was so sad. So I've never given up on this.
No, not at all.
That was somebody's grandmother, great-grandmother that was up there.
Yes.
Under Public Works, the speed limit on Clay Street's 40 miles an hour, I mean, I was down there the other day and doing 40 miles an hour, and they were pushing behind me, so, and rough road signs are still out there, so.
Are they?
Yeah. So I don't know if we want to lower the speed limit to 30 on that, or is that something that's done by ordinance, or is that?
Whatever we have on Colorado and Grand Boulevard, I think would.
Colorado's 40. Grand Boulevard, I think's 40.
If they're pushing you at 40, are you going to lower it to 30?
They're going to blow past you.
They're not, they're not going to change their speed, they're just going to have a more open.
I think only as far as, as soon as long as we get some enforcement out there.
Yeah, I was going to say, I mean, Joe knows where to park the guys, down the 9,000 block and that, and 8900, so.
I could also put my Model A out there, you think I'll slow you right down with that black and white one?
You got a?
No, I got enough.
Light on top?
I got enough.
No?
Okay, anything else on the Public Works?
That was enough, Madam President.
Very good. Um, council affairs, Councilman Span.
Hi, no report.
Personnel policy and employee benefits, Councilman Garalcheck.
No report.
Saying Councilman Whiting is not here, anyone has anything on public safety?
Yeah, I'd like to thank the chief. I'm getting a whole lot of calls about patrol cars going up and down around there, they're ecstatic, so I don't know, something going on out there. But it's, it's very well patrolled. I've seen them when I'm out there looking at those roads on 61st and 60th Drive, and you can see those squad cars going around. Something, looks good, looks good.
Very good. This past weekend, I was invited to a picnic that was held over in Hidden Lake, and it was really nice to see how the EMA was patrolling the picnic ground, even in the torrential downpours we, we had at that hour. And again, I'd like to thank the EMA and John Menchuck for their hard diligent work that they do. Okay, anything else on the public safety? Parks and Recreation, Councilman Span.
Not yet, I'm waiting on some information for you.
Okay, very good. Um, environmental affairs, Councilman Garalcheck.
Uh, I don't have anything, but Matt, I'm sure he has something.
Well, we've had an abundance of rain, several flash flood-style rain events in the past week. Our guys have been out, including myself, being very proactive before all the rain events, clearing all the drains, making sure everything's ready for each, each surcharge of rain that we're getting. We've been working closely with Lake County Surveyors Office on maintenance for Turkey Creek Lateral 6. That made a big difference in the Meadowdale watershed, especially with these past rain events. On August 14th, we had a very informative meeting regarding the new stormwater master plan. Darren Olson and Christopher Burke did an excellent job presenting all the details for future, for the future of our planning for stormwater. And we're looking at closely, we had a special meeting for, within the Broadfield Center, there was a, a new development proposed in there. We had a technical meeting on August 22nd with Brant, as well as our engineers, including Thomas Burke, who conducted a previous drainage study and design for drainage improvements after the 2008 floods. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I got something there.
55th and Broadway on the west side of the street, right there at the corner, every time it rains, like we've had these torrential rains lately, that corner floods, and it takes a while for the water to go down. And I know it's a state road, and I know that it's probably going to take the state to get involved in it, but it just, every time, this morning, when I rode through there, there was still like a huge puddle there.
Yeah, we've notified them about that. We'll notify them again.
Would you please?
Yeah, I will.
You know, I don't know what else we could do there.
Right.
You know, because it's, it just floods.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's a problem with the drain or what.
Yeah, they probably need to be cleaned out, things like that, so.
Probably so. Okay, thank you. I'd like to say something about stormwater. I got a call from Matt, and he asked me, did I get any, any of the flash floods? And I told him everything was going fine, which I really respect that, and I'd like to thank you for it. And I got a call from Tony Green about, uh, Grant Street didn't flood. Didn't flood? Didn't flood. And Matt found something in the bottom of that.
Oh, we, we've been doing a lot of maintenance over in that area over there, and Matt's had a picture of what we pulled out of there. I mean, there was two-by-fours, basketballs, baseballs, footballs. The guy from the county said if he wanted to go into a part-time job of collecting everything that he's found in the creeks, he said he could probably put thousands of balls together to donate to somebody with all the balls that he's found in creeks and, you know, there's, and, uh, the lateral over there, Lateral 6, I was there with Matt and the county over at the middle school, MIS, and what is that stuff, bloom algae, or?
No, you got Eurasian milkfoil, and it's a long stringy vegetative growth.
They were in the creek, and they were up to their chests in waiters, taking the stuff off of the grate off of the thing. And we were there probably a good hour, you know, just talking and watching them work or whatever on it, and I'd say within 20 minutes or whatever, the stuff was back on the grates again. So it's, uh, it's just something that we just got to keep after, so.
And the county is very responsive, so I appreciate their, their efforts. And if we can keep the normal water level of that lateral 6 down, that helps all the drainage throughout to the north there. So it makes a big, big difference when we have these rain events, and that's why we didn't have a lot of flooding in the streets and things like that, so.
I mean, I would suggest that you guys call stormwater if you see any areas or whatever, because Joe was out, Matt was out, Mike was out, I was out myself that day looking, so.
Alright, yeah.
I mean, that way we can see it when there's, when there's a flood event, so we can basically see what we need to do or how we need to attack it.
Very good. Anything else on the environmental affairs? Moving on to elections and public, uh, public relations, I have no report. Economic Development, Councilman Garalcheck.
I have, uh, we had a meeting before this for economic development. We have two companies that are coming to town and looking for a tax abatement. South Lake Automation, they're off of 89th Avenue, and then there's a proposed new building being built in the Ameriplex crossings, Business Park. It's CCL Labels and Company, and they're proposing to have 25 jobs transfer and then another 50 jobs on top of that, but within the first year, another 25, so it'd be 50 in the first year. And then South Lake Automation is looking at 10, 10 jobs. So, so more people coming to town, willing to do business with the town, seem to be a good meeting, and we're looking forward to them. That's all I have.
Very good. Utility Liaisons, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Under Town Government Organization and ADA Compliance, I have no report. Abandoned Properties, Councilman Hardaway.
Thank you. Um, I'm working on a list of foreclosed on right now, that there's a gentleman that's looking to give us a proposal to, use it not for profit, and take a look at him, he's going to take a picture of him, come out and look at him and see if what's salvageable and what's not salvageable. It's just a proposal, before we sit down with the guy, Jean, we want to know everything about this guy. We're not just going to, because everybody's out, everybody hangs out the shingle. Because I had another guy that called me in the barber shop, uh, his is not, he is for profit, but he wants to do something. And unfortunately, he just did some time with Fed, at Fed Man, and we're not going to be dealing with him. He doesn't want to be conscious of the people that we do business with.
Absolutely.
We want to make sure that they're going to bring value to the citizens in the town of Maryville, and not look to make a quick buck. Just stay tuned. As soon as I get it ready, I'll get, I'll get it to you guys.
Very good. Moving on to ordinances, we have no first readings. We do have second reading, ordinance 14-25. In accordance to the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies to the 2014 budget within the parks and recreation budget. Camp counselors will be decreased by 7,000, office supplies decreased by 1,000, telephone decreased by 500, repairs decreased by 500, for a total of $9,000 decrease. For contractual, that will be $9,000 increase.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span. Do we have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, any public comment? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing no public comment, roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yes.
Garage?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Meado?
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Resolution 14-32, a resolution of the town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, approving a lease for certain public improvements between, between the town of Maryville Redevelopment Authority and the town of Maryville Redevelopment Commission in regarding certain related matters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway? Garage?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to BCA Action. Petitioner Lewis &amp; Lewis, owner Ed Malone, requests for special exception approval. Purpose was for a restaurant. The location was at 1506 East 83rd Avenue. The zoning is a C3 highway commercial. Case number Z18E10-014. I have received a letter from the owners. Dear Town Council, as the property owners of the building at 1506 East 83rd Avenue, we are writing this letter to inform the town that we would like to withdraw our special exception application for Gaucho Steakhouse, case number Z18E10-0714. In addition, we no longer consent to the use of the property as previously requested for Lewis Hill Lewis Incorporated and Ken &amp; Keith Lewis. We had nothing but the best intentions when we applied for this application, but in light of the recent incidents, we have decided to take our building in a different direction. Thank you for your original consideration of our request. Respectfully, Mr. Ed Malone and Mrs. Dana Malone, DE Malone LLC, owners.
Madam President, members of the council, it would be appropriate for there to be a motion, second, and approval of the motion to accept the withdrawal of the petition and terminate all further proceedings under case number?
Z18?
Yes, Z18E10-0714.
Madam President, I will make a motion to accept the withdrawal with one condition, that Mr. Buscemi and Ms. Gregor inform the Mahones that they will still sign a zoning commitment letter eliminating from the C3 Highway Commercial zoning district the permitted use of tavern and nightclubs. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway, to remove the verbiage of tavern and nightclub?
Are those specifically listed during the C3? I know taverns is, tavern is, but nightclub is not?
It's under entertainment.
Under entertainment, then we'll remove, and that's a special exception? Remove that as live entertainment. I amend my motion, Madam President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Roll call, Mr. Guernsey.
Can I make this before?
Yes, sir.
I feel, I guess my concern is that, probably with Sean and everybody else up there, is that I don't know what impression people have of town of Maryville, but they need to understand that it's not going to be easy anymore. What's, what's happened here and in other instances where people have come into the town with clubs or whatever, they've always given us a black eye.
Yes.
And I think that now's the time for us. This incident brought everything to light for us, and this is an opportunity for us from this point forward, to make sure that in the future, anybody that wants to come in here for a nightclub, restaurant, or whatever, that they are above board and they're reputable businesses, and we're never going to be saddled with what we went through trying to get this guy out of business.
You're absolutely right.
I agree with Richard, and I want to applaud the chief and, and Durinda and Bruce, and especially Joe. Joe gave me a lot of advice on this with the police activity, and keep in mind, folks, we're doing what this council has done in our four years, what we've had come through here, with all the economic development, Tom just talked about it, you know, CCL Design is looking at $11 million, Dawn Foods was $11 million, Modern Drop Forge, $45 million. These people aren't coming to town and want to have this type of stigma, as, as Richard said. You know, we're proposing to pump $9 million federal money into the Mississippi Street corridor right at that intersection. We can't have this type of business. I'm not going to allow it as Ward 6 Councilman, I won't. I told John that and Bruce that specifically. Do whatever we got to do, I'm not going to support this thing.
But it doesn't just make the town of Maryville look bad. You got to think of Holbert, Crown Point?
Yep.
When you get the mall right there, who, who wants to, nobody wants to?
Exactly.
And Crown Point's got a, a $2 million project on the board for an upscale mall.
Yep.
Do we want Holbert to close because we can't control what business goes in there?
We can't control what goes, exactly.
I don't think so.
Yeah. Thank you guys for your support last week, and Rich and Carol yesterday during the meeting.
Do we want Holbert to close because we can't control what...
We can't control what goes, exactly.
I don't think so.
Thank you guys for your support last week and Rich and Carol yesterday during the meeting.
I'll support you anytime, something like that. No problem.
Definitely. Okay, roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Brodjak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero.
Madam President, members of the council, for the record now, with the withdrawal of this petition by Mr. and Mrs. Malone, the approval of the withdrawal by the Town Council, and the conditions now attached to any future use of this property at fifteen hundred East Eighty-third Avenue, the public should be assured that there's no further use of this property without careful Town Council approval. The Town Council members were vigilant and they acted promptly on behalf of the citizens of Maryville when faced with this threat to public safety. So neither the rain nightclub nor any other business now has the legal right to operate at this property location unless reviewed and approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, the zoning director and her staff, and the Town Council. And the property owners, Mr. and Mrs. Malone, are to be commended for wisely deciding to withdraw the petition and take the use of this property in a different direction.
But one question, Mr. Buscemi, what about fifteen hundred? He only said fifteen oh six. And, you know, we have to be careful because, you know, fifteen hundred is the adjacent building. And he never, he doesn't make any mention of fifteen hundred.
The last permitted use for fifteen hundred, in my opinion, is void because that previous use for the young adult club was for that petitioner only at that location, fifteen hundred only. And for, uh, that use only, that use has expired, went away. In my opinion, there's no current zoning approval, Councilman, either for fifteen hundred. And if a petitioner seeks land use approval for fifteen hundred, you have the right to review that proposed use and attach whatever conditions you believe are appropriate.
I just want to get it in on the record that fifteen hundred is a part of that, even though it's not written here, it is a part of that same.
That is correct. I, I understood the motion, uh, I, of the council to be that it was attaching, uh, those correction, those conditions for future zoning commitments to the entire property.
Well, and, and for clarification to Durinda, um, the lot size says four point eight acres slash six thousand square foot building. Obviously, the entire parcel is the four point eight acres. Uh, the key number that's associated with it could have two addresses, correct? Uh, if, if, I'll be more than happy to amend my motion, Mr. Buscemi, and revote for both addresses and the key number.
In order to make it clear, uh, if you feel it's necessary...
I will, I will amend my previous motion to include the four point eight acre track, the key numbers that are associated with the addresses of fifteen hundred and fifteen oh six.
My, my second is still good.
And for the record, that's one, there is one and only one parcel number for the entire property at both street addresses. That parcel number is forty-five dash twelve dash twenty-two dash four-two-seven dash zero-zero-nine point zero-zero-zero dash zero-three-zero. And it's my understanding that the council is considering a motion to attach the previously stated zoning conditions to any use at any portion of that property.
But it should be noted, ladies and gentlemen, I don't want to sound like, you know, we're, we're hamstrung in this guy. Keep in mind, C-three Highway Commercial has a hundred and thirty-five permitted uses. So for us to take two out that have caused nothing but headache and, and problems for the town, I don't think is unreasonable whatsoever. There's a myriad of uses that can go in there that are well established. A regular restaurant can go in there, you know, uh, that's right across from the mall. As Chrissy said, that could, you know, could do very well, I'm sure, so.
Councilmen, in light, in light of the, uh, recent history of the use of this property, the council members have every right, in light of their duty to protect the town's public health, safety and welfare, to attach reasonable conditions such as these conditions that are under consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Very well said.
And the motion, the amended motion is pending for a vote.
Okay.
Ray?
Yes.
Okay.
Span?
Yes.
Hardaway? Garajak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Miano?
Yes. Motion approved, six to zero. Moving on to Bravo Properties. Is a petitioner here?
Yes.
Step right up. Petitioner Bravo Properties, owner Chicago Trust Company and AS trustee, request is for a special exception approval for a supportive assisted living facility for seniors. Location three-four-three East Ninetieth Drive. The zoning is C-dash-three Highway Commercial, case number Z-one-eight-E-one-one-dash-zero-seven-one-four. For this petitioner only, at this location only, for this use only, and approval of the subdivision by the plan commission and to allow for the reduction of room sizes and parking spaces due to their special exception use.
So moved, Mr. Madam President.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Hardaway. Do we have any discussion?
This is the kind of development that we want to have in town, Madam President.
Oh, you're quite right on, on that.
Zach?
Not alone.
Nice job. Matt has ever, I'm sorry, Madam President, has, Zach indicated that he met with you and Cedric?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're still under review on some of the items, but overall...
We'll solve those by plan commission?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry, Madam President.
Roll call, Mr. Gernsy.
Okay, Span?
Yes.
Hardaway?
Yeah.
Brodjak?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Pettit?
Yes.
Yes, motion approved, six to zero. Welcome to Maryville.
Welcome to Maryville, Zach.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Brant?
Thank you, gentlemen, ladies.
Moving on to old business. Do we have any old business? Seeing no old business, new business. Do we have any new business?
Uh, tomorrow, um, we're having the, uh, auction for the two parcels of the parks. It's at, uh, three PM here tomorrow. John, right?
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
And, uh, thank you to both the Post Tribune and the Times for assisting with additional publicity of the auction. As Councilman Garajak stated, uh, at this location here in the Town Hall Meeting Room at three PM tomorrow, the auction of two Maryville vacant park properties, the Hendrix Park Parcel on East Eightieth and the Union Park Parcel here at Seventy-third and Broadway will be available for public auction. We encourage you to notify those that might be interested in those parcels so they may participate.
Okay, moving on to public comments.
Madam President, just one last thank you, uh, on this nightclub issue. I do want to recognize our town attorney. Uh, John kind of dropped everything, I would assume, and put it together a lot of paperwork and, and met with us on short notice over the weekend. Uh, Joe kept me in the loop. Uh, I want to thank him again, but John, thank you for your work as well on this.
You're welcome, Sean.
Okay, moving on to public comments. Do we have any public comments? Step right up, Brian, I see your hand. Get up. We all know who you are, but please give your name and address, please.
Turn that shirt down, Brian. Brian Deering, seventy-six oh one Madison Street, Maryville, Indiana. Uh, I want to echo also from the community side, uh, the thing that you have just done in ensuring the safety of our town. Uh, most of you, if not all of you, know that I've been involved in entertainment most of my life, uh, starting at sixteen years old until today. I've helped out with town events, notably the tenth and the fortieth anniversaries. The thing that I've always found with any type of entertainment venue is the most important thing is security. And when Carol and I worked together on the fortieth anniversary, we had a lot of discussion on security. That's a town event. I've been at clubs in Chicago, South Side Chicago Irish bars on St. Patrick's Day working, and it's always the same thing. The key to a successful event, the key to a successful venue is security. Uh, last month, I was at Ravinia for Crowe's Be Still's and Nash. You couldn't ask for a more peaceful crowd. Granted, we're talking, you know, four thousand plus people, but there were hundreds of uniformed and private security guards there. My comment is, is I think it's time that we review through Public Safety Commission, through our Police Commission, our procedures as approving indoor and outdoor entertainment. Uh, the situation that we just got in where somebody used a piece of property, uh, that had been approved for a DJ for live entertainment is a perfect example. It has no, no bearing on the genre, okay? It has to do with any group of people coming together, uh, at an event where there's going to be music, possibly liquor, uh, served. And if a person, you know, we should look at putting some teeth into our ordinance. If a person is going to misuse a private prior approval, it can't be a hundred dollar fine. A hundred dollars means nothing. You have to put teeth in it. Let's talk a ten thousand dollar fine. You look at towns all around here that have live entertainment venues, and that's the type of ordinances they have on the books. So my recommendation is let's work with the chief, let's work with our police personnel, let's come up with a set of rules that dictates if you're going to have one hundred people at a private party or ten thousand people, these are the amount of uniformed police officers you must hire, whether they're from Maryville, first choice, and any surrounding community or the county. We had, when we did the tenth anniversary at Hidden Lake Park, we had to have state police, county's, uh, police, Gary Police, Maryville, of course, and we had to pay for all of them. It wasn't a, a town paid for event. The committee that put that on paid the tab, and I think it ran to about twenty-two thousand dollars for security for three days. We have to come up with a set of rules that addresses these items. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Brian. Anyone else under public comment? Moving on to the announcements. Board of Zoning Appeals meeting August twenty-seventh at six-thirty PM. Stormwater Management Board meeting September second at four-thirty PM. Plan Commission Workshop, September second at six-thirty PM. Park and Recreation Public Meeting, September third at six-thirty PM at the Park Department, fifty-seven fifty Tyler Street. Police Commission Meeting, September fifth at eight o'clock AM. Town Council Meeting, September ninth at six-thirty PM. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Zach Agar.
Motion by Councilman Hardaway, seconded by Councilman Pettit, meaning adjourned.
Thank you.